Hi. We're going to call the January 22th meeting, Board of Education meeting, to order. Happy to have everyone here. We're back, New Year, keep going. I'd like to open the meeting at this point and see if anyone in the public would like to say anything, public audience. Excellent, we have time at the end of the meeting as well. And let's go to Board and Administration of Communications. Katie?
Thank you.
Katie, we want to thank you very much for your term with us, and we've really enjoyed your insights and your participation. Thank you so much. It's your last meeting, but we hope that maybe you'll come back and visit us again.
Yes, thank you. This has been a very interesting and enriching experience, I think. So, at the elementary schools, Terriffill had their movie night last week, and they showed Boss Baby, which I'm sure was a fun night. The Central School Family Dance is this Friday, and the Beethoven Quintet, which I spoke about the week before, has made its round to all the elementary schools, and students had the opportunity to learn about elements of music such as rhythm, melody, and dynamics. The middle school, the Neon Nights Dance, is this Friday. There's going to be inflatables in the gym and a DJ in the cafeteria, so another fun evening coming up. Also this Friday is the Girls in Engineering program. That happens every year, where eighth grade girls interested in engineering careers and potentially the classes offered at the high school go in the morning to look at the program of studies that the high school has to offer. And tomorrow is the last day of midterms at the high school.
Misses Selena, how many years did you chair the Neon Night?
I think it was seven or eight. I remember it well.
That's a very good run. It's an excellent night.
Multiple principals.
How many people principal?
I went right through Mr. White. So, started with Erin and ended with Brian.
That's a fun night.
I shivered a little when you said that.
Thank you very much for your input, and again, thank you for all, your service and your dedication to our team. We really appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. I was delighted that I did attend the Martin Luther King event on Monday, and I just want to do a shout out, first of all, to the Henry James Memorial School Choir and Jason Stammen, who led them. It was truly an emotional performance. The title, for those of you that might, maybe weren't there, was "I Choose Love," and it was very topical, a very, very good thought in this day and age. The second thing I just wanted to mention is that the speakers at that event made a special point of encouraging students to participate in things like what our students are doing now in developing the Martin Luther King Memorial Program and other things that they've done, the documentary and so forth. And I was really moved by that, too, that the speakers said, hey, these students, you've got to carry this forward, and that's exactly right. So, I just want to shout out about that in a positive way and say that I was really proud that day to listen to that.
Lydia?
Yeah. Briefly, as you know, legislative session here in Connecticut has already started. The Education Committee already had its first meeting. We have new leadership at the top. We know it's going to be a long session, and some of the new things that will be brought forward in curriculum will be climate change and African-American history. So, that's what's going on at that point. Speed Cost Task Force will be one that will be looked at very carefully, and of course, classroom safety, so that will be brought forward. On the CREG front, we passed a resolution for magnet school funding, and for those of you that didn't get the information or still interested, the CREG Legislative Breakfast is this Thursday morning. It's at 7:30, Room 301 at the State Capitol. If you're interested in going, and I would encourage you to go if you can, please get on the CREG website and register. We've got a pretty good group of superintendents and administrators and Board of Ed members coming, and a small group of legislators, so we're hoping that we do get a fair number within the CREG region coming. I will be leaving for Washington tomorrow, so I will not be around for the breakfast. We will be having the board meeting for NSBA, the Equity Symposium, and we'll be having the Advocacy Institute, and then we'll be spending two days on the Hill, where we will be meeting the Congressional delegation. It will be an opportunity for us, the Connecticut delegation, to meet Representative Congresswoman Johanna Hayes and Senator Chris Murphy. So, we will be having, hopefully, a good session or good appointment session with them. This is the first year, we just got the information, that Secretary Betsy DeVos will be coming to speak to us. This is, she will be entering into her third year in Cabinet, and so this is the first year that she will be coming, so as a special keynote speaker with Senator Lamar Alexander.
What is she going to talk about, if you know?
We do not know yet what she will talk about. Let's hope she, she's talking to 600 Board of Ed superintendents, administrative education leaders from around the country, and there will also be other Congressional and Senators there. So, let's hope we talk about the state of education today and what we are going to be advocating for on the Hill come Monday and Tuesday. So, the other thing that we will be doing is a kickoff of our campaign because we are reauthorizing, it will be a reauthorization and full funding for IDEA. So, that's going to be very important for us. That's why we'll be there. So, and I have asked our administration here, and Sue was very kind to forward, some information about, all of us were asked to submit to our Congressional delegation about how IDEA affects our districts around the country and what we do within our school districts. So, Sue was very fortunate that she was able to submit to me, and I will submit to the Congressional delegation. So, it will be a jam-packed week, and I will let you know what Secretary DeVos, you know, I'll let you know what the next question will be.
The CREG resolution?
Yes.
Just to remind folks at the table, is essentially a response to being completely underfunded by the state of Connecticut for their per pupil cost. They can't run their operation as is. They are trying to put leverage on the state to meet their legislative mandate.
Yeah.
And if not, they're going to come back to home districts and raise tuition.
Right. So, we had-
So, it could be a challenge for all of us.
This is going to be a challenge for all 35 districts. You know, the real just of it is the structural funding at the state level, which we all know, which has just been the age-old component of the magnet school funding. So, we did pass the resolution. We will be bringing this forward to the Connecticut Legislature about this because technically the onus is on the Legislature. And as I mentioned before, you know, we do not want any more new mandates coming forward. We are in a fiscal constraint where we are with this, and this is one area that we want to bring forward. As you know, we have new, you know, senators and representatives in the State House, so for some of them, this is going to be very, very new. They do represent, you know, the 35 towns within the CREG district. And this is not just CREG alone, this is the five resks within the state that are also facing this, you know, underfunding. But this is something that we, as a CREG Board, felt it was really important to bring forward to the Legislature. And come February, when I get back, and we will be doing a lot of advocacy and testifying also, you know, before the Legislature. So, stay tuned, it should be very interesting. It's going to be a long session this year, so we hope to end mid-June, but bills have to be in by the beginning of April, but that's where we are. So, that's what's going on here.
Thank you very much. Good report. All set. Mrs. Limkey?
Just two updates. On January 9th, the Community for Care did hold their vaping program. It was extremely well-attended, but if you didn't get a chance to go in person, our very own Chris Kelly did the taping, and it is being played on SCTV, and the video will also be posted on the town's website under Community for Care, so please check that out. And just to share with the Board that this will be our second year participating in the Special Education Youth Advisory Council. So, what that means is that we have middle school and high school students who will be participating in a variety of leadership seminars that are sponsored by the Bureau of Special Education, and there'll be a culminating all-day leadership workshop for our students, where they'll come together with a variety of other students from other districts, all identified with special needs, and do some visioning and next steps about building respect and inclusivity in the school culture. So, we're very excited to be a part of that for the second year, and certainly I'll update the Board on any outcomes.
Thank you. Mrs. Selena?
Just a quick introduction tonight. As the Board knows, many of our teachers invest their time in professional development for educational leadership programs. Sometimes that involves homework to come to a board meeting and see what goes on, so I'd like to introduce English teacher, exceptional English teacher from Simsbury High School, Carolyn Weiser, who is here to do just that. Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you for coming.
It's good homework. I'm all set.
Excellent.
Just quickly, two things. One, you will see Mr. Leclerc's seat empty, which never happens. He is running double duty tonight. Burke is over right now around the bend at the public building meeting where they are approving the educational specs for the Henry James Project. When they complete that, he will come back this way, and we will do the same presentation. He's got the architects here with him, but we're going to have to reorder when we get to that point in the agenda where Neil will do his presentation first, and we'll pick Burke up when he gets back. So, just want to let you know that he will be coming back in about 7:15. The other piece, I just want to give a heads up, we have received the survey data back from Hanover on the school start time, so we've had some opportunity to go through it. Erin and I have some time on the calendar tomorrow, which we'll take a look, and in short order, we will bring back to you kind of what we think is a sketch plan of how we want to share that data to both the Board, the community, and kind of the next steps in the process for discussion and input. But I want to let you know that that is moving along.
Still moving.
Yep.
Excellent. I, too, want to mention the MLK event that was yesterday, MLK Day. It was our ninth annual, and what's wonderful about it is it's very community-based, and to be able to have our students there and presenting in front of 200 people is really very, very special. The Henry James Choir was spectacular with Jason Stammen as the leader, and he selected that song on purpose, and he was very passionate about teaching his students and letting them be themselves. It was really wonderful. And the intonations were our senior citizens choir, and they also sang, which also brought a nice depth of community. And we had wonderful speakers, and we were very fortunate, Johanna Hayes, our new Congresswoman, came and was able to speak to us, and it was just, and Joelle Murchison was the keynote speaker, and she was very moving and upbeat and positive about, you know, next steps and just how to, how to try to understand how other people live and how we can all just try to live together. She, this is all also on SCTV. They taped it last, yesterday, so if you want to see it or if you missed any of it, please feel free to look it up on the Community Television website.
Yeah, just one more comment on that, because it was especially, and it was a wonderful presentation. And the speaker, Dr. Murchison, is it? Yeah, Joelle Murchison. She talked about hope. She tried to convince everybody there that there is hope for better days ahead, and said, hey. And Johanna Hayes even said, she was told during the campaign, somebody got up to her, and I've said this before in a business environment, hope is not a strategy. And she said, oh, yeah, hope is a strategy, and she went on to prove it. How hope really informed her campaign, so that was wonderful. Sorry for that.
No, that's fine. That's fine. He came away with something. See, y'all should have come. Moving on, I think we can move on to the minutes of January 9th meeting. Anyone see any corrections, have any comments? I'd accept a motion.
So, move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain also.
Motion carries. Moving on, again, to personnel. Mr. Sullivan?
Yep, just one item tonight. Allison Young is an English teacher at Henry James for the past 12 years. Longtime Board members may remember seeing this one before because Allison has a growing family, and her latest child was born in late November, early December, I want to say, and her maternity leave ends today, and this is a request for a child-rearing leave of absence starting tomorrow to the rest of the year. So, congratulations to Allison and her family, and need somebody to make that motion.
Move that the Board of Education approved the request for non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Allison Young effective January 23rd, 2019, through June 30th, 2019.
Second?
I'll second.
Everyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good luck on your child-rearing. It's a very exciting time. And now we have a conglomerate of people joining us, we're all happy to see you all. We have a busy meeting. I'm going to move on to the next, let me see. We're going to see what he wants to do. He's coming. He's outside the room, you can't see.
Ah, there he is.
Tom, do you have anything else to say about Martin Luther King Day? Can you share something else?
Burke, you want to go now, or would you prefer Neil to go first?
Sure, since we've got a bunch of folks here.
That's what I figured.
Whatever you want to do.
Perfect timing, Mr. Leclerc.
All right, so I'll ask Sue to start with you. Two exterior views of the project. I just want to brief any of the team. Obviously, we have Principal Scott Baker. I'm going to start with the Castle Boos, Architect Amy Amaro, and Jennifer Mangielli will be joining us later. Freddie Carrage from Castle Boos, who does all the day-to-day work with me. Downs Construction, we have Dave Herr, and we have Tracy Brennan. So, they're going to do the cost as the piece. Castle Boos will give you a little bit of background, where we have some visuals for you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Do the PDFs first. Okay, auditorium or media center? Take my pick?
Well, I'm toggling over the auditorium, so we'll go auditorium first.
Everybody see that?
Hi, Burke, my name is Amy Amaro. I work with Jennifer Mangielli.
If you can't see, you can move around.
Project Director.
Can you see?
So, this is the updated view of the auditorium. This is the existing stair. We've got the brick panel above. This is not meant to be the main entrance. The main entrance is on Continuing Ed on the opposite side, closer to the parking lot. We took response from the Design Review Board and darkened up the panel a little bit, and otherwise they were good with this image.
So, where is, this is in the end?
This is actually the front of the building, so the parent drop-off booth is right here.
Okay. She's standing on Firetown.
Standing on Firetown?
Yep.
You still can't connect to the parking lot?
No, it is, oh.
You can?
You go through the entrance from the parking lot.
You have to go through the Continuing Ed office to get to the auditorium?
But that's like a lobby.
That lobby, that entrance.
Do you have a view from the other side, just so we can put it together? Okay.
But you'll come in the lobby, you'll come in the-
Wouldn't it look the same from the other side? Wouldn't it look the same from the other side as it looks now?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
In your packet, you have that bird's-eye view of the work, so I think it helps to visualize with that, that you, that you come in the lobby area, the area that's in white, that has always been sort of contemplated to be the, that was what this was intended to be during prior concept plans. So, it really blends itself well because that's where all your parking is.
Okay.
Any other questions on the auditorium, on the exterior of it, please?
Sue, will we, I'm sorry, it's not about the exterior, it's the interior. How are they going, is the chorus room no longer the chorus room? Is that going to be the entrance to the auditorium?
No, the chorus room stays.
Stays.
Oh, the green hallway, is that the?
You have the floor plan in front of you.
Yeah, the little green hallway.
Okay. So, if I'm coming in, the doors here?
You're coming in right here. That lobby is existing.
Okay.
There's going to be doors here that go into the auditorium.
Okay.
We have a movie that will show you that entrance.
Okay.
Okay, so what's this? Oh, that's-
That's the media center.
But my question, I'm going back to the auditorium. The gray, was it just brick?
No, it's metal panel.
Oh, it's metal panel. But is the building brick up to the metal panels?
We have some, we have some quick samples for you.
I'm just saying, I'm just wondering why we had to change it to gray.
The Design Review Board-
Recommended it, but that doesn't mean we have to do it necessarily. I'm just saying, I'm just looking at the both options.
What color was it previously?
We actually have both of those samples.
I would like to see.
So, this is what, their feedback was that this is matching what's in the area now. The bottom area there is this darker-
Yeah, here.
Brick here, which picks that up a bit, and then this is what the Design Review apparently said would be kind of helpful to match the top and the bottom, tie it all together a little bit.
Yeah, they wanted to pick up, they requested we look at a darker color that would pick up some of the darker brick tones.
What had you chosen prior to the Design Review meeting?
We had a somewhat lighter color. This color we had prior to the Design Review meeting.
Because it's more earth, it blends better with the earth tones?
Yeah, but I don't-
It doesn't matter either way. Okay.
So, the brick on the bottom is going to match, that's where I'm confused, I have two different brick samples.
Yeah, the dark brick will match the top.
The red brick is the red band here.
Okay.
The darker brick on the bottom is this, you can see it right here.
Oh, like the foundation?
And as opposed to having just a huge wall of brick, which would look institutional or something?
Oh, got it, got it. Yep, I just wasn't sure about that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, sorry.
This is a view of the media center. Thanks, saving me. This is your existing two-story that's on Firetown, and this is the existing tech ed wing here. The media center's right in the middle of that. Got curtain wall, the same banding of brick that matches around. Curtain wall here, this is the maker space back here, and we also have some interior views of that coming, or a movie of it.
So, it'll be the same foundational brick at the auditorium?
Right.
Question, please. What is the architectural rationale or operational rationale for the sloping roofs, the higher, the higher part in the front and the lower?
Like the pitch here.
Yeah, and the much higher, I guess, higher ceiling in the front and the lower ceiling in the back. What was the rationale behind that?
We wanted to create a nice volume in this space. When you see the interior of it, I think it makes a little bit more sense personally, because you can, the structure is exposed in there, so you see this, we're exposing all this glass here.
We're going to show that interior context for you, so you'll get the best of it.
I was just wondering, because that's kind of a deviation from the, look at the rest of the building.
Right.
It's very different, and I also wonder whether it's more costly to do it that way as opposed to doing it uniform. Just a question, is it more costly to do it that way?
Having a pitch on a roof is less costly because the roof doesn't have to be maintained as often, correct?
What did the architect say about that?
We really started with aesthetically, we wanted to use context to the existing building, but we really didn't want to fully just be a box, straight down, flat.
You wanted it to be more creative?
We did, and we wanted these additions to sing a little bit, to be something special. They're both very special spaces, they're both looking forward to some new educational ideas. We didn't just leave, I don't know if you-
That's interesting, though. Could you go back to the auditorium picture, please?
Sure.
Ah, so both of these things-
They both integrate the slopes.
I see. Yeah, it's pretty interesting. Thank you.
Why the exterior door on the library?
That's actually an exit door that we're required to have, so many exits for the auditorium, and we're kind of locked in as to-
And the same with the library?
I'm asking about the library.
Oh, the library, sorry. We did need another exit door from the library, so that is, that exit door will take people out to a public way, a paved walkway that connects to an existing, there's not an existing paved walkway there now, but we're creating it to connect an existing exit door off of the main hallway to the media center and bring it around the front, which is really how the existing exit door should have had a paved walkway as well. So, this is our opportunity to kind of do the right thing for exit.
I like the pitch roof. I think it's got to, I mean, the extra windows have got to make that space a lot brighter with that.
I like it, too.
I am, speaking of exits, I hate to beat a dead horse here, but they, you have to, there's still no way right now to get from the parking lot to the front, which is the way a parent has to get into a building. Right now, we have to walk through the snow.
But not anymore.
There won't be, okay. Because the path that you put, that last picture, that path looks like it goes straight out to the street. On the last picture, that's not the meeting.
The auditorium.
Yeah.
The auditorium.
The auditorium, right.
I would think so.
That looks like it goes out to the street and not to the front door.
There's also another path that's running right here. It's a little harder to see from the-
And that path connects all the way out to the parking lot.
That would have flowed that way to go to-
Correct, it's going to go to the parking lot. All the way around.
You can kind of see it. Burke has the-
Oh, okay.
We are connecting the back parking lot. There's a, there's a bit of walkway getting to the back entrance where Continuing Ed is, and there's a large canopy over here, but we're actually connecting a walkway all the way around, this is the addition, all the way around to the front entrance. So, this doesn't exist now, you're right.
Right. No.
Can you show us how you're going to get from the library, too?
Sure. Now, the library, to enter the library, you really are going to have to go through the building, through the main entrance, and when we show you the video, you'll see how you walk through the main entrance, well, I don't know if you start back as far as the main entrance, but walk through the main hallway to enter the media center through a lobby over here. This is really just an exit that is going to take you around on a paved walkway because the code requires that an exit takes us safely to us.
So, Jen, as a parent within alternate, as far as, we'd be roughly doubling the number of parking spaces up front, so I think that might address your issue of not having to-
I don't mind walking, I just don't want to walk in the snow.
Right, you need a snow, you need a path.
All right, we need path.
So, the library door is really an emergency exit kind of a situation. You're not expecting people to use those walkways to get in and out?
Not into it, no, not really.
Okay.
Hey, should we go to the video?
Yes, please.
I thought we had so many questions.
Okay, we'll go. So, from the auditorium, you're going to start where if I was a member of the public coming through the lobby, this is my view when I walk into the auditorium.
I'm coming in from the parking lot.
Correct.
I don't think that was the start. We didn't do a sound show.
No sound show.
That could start singing.
So, the windows are looking out into the hallway?
That is the control booth back there.
Oh.
And then those blue areas that you see on the sidewall, that's actually acoustical wall panel, that's just a colored wall panel that's not in there. And there's lighting strips that are in that school. So, all of this area at the bottom here is all slope seating with ramps, and then if I'm standing up here, this is actually step seating, there's handicapped seating here, here, and here. And also handicap, if you have to get to the stage, the path when the movie first started, you'd be able to come up, around, and over.
So, the pathway we were on when the movie first started, we're already in the auditorium?
Correct. So, my back is to the door that I would come through?
So, everyone's going to funnel through that hallway to get to the seating.
Correct.
Would you like me to play it again, Susan?
So, you can enter, so using this, using this again, you can enter, it's showing entering in this green area from sort of that main lobby, but students can also enter from the other-
From that door.
Right.
Oh, I didn't see that door. Okay.
To the auditorium. To the auditorium.
Right, so there's two doors.
And then one exit out to the outside. One exit out, two, two exits into the school, one exit outside, directly from the auditorium.
There's one exit direct to the outside.
From the auditorium or from the hallway?
From the auditorium, but then there are also, you exit back into the main lobby, which is required by code that exits the same way we came in. So most of our exit is back to the lobby where we live.
Question, please. The, from an acoustic standpoint, I see their panels high up for, I'm sure for acoustical engineering purposes, I'm just, and a large part of the rationale for this was, the music program is so important, and acoustics will be extremely important. I'm just wondering, is the technology that we've used here for acoustics even superior to what exists at ICE?
Jennifer, I guess, in terms of, why don't you just talk a little bit about the specialty design support on your team?
We are working with a few consultants, one being an acoustical engineer that's looking specifically at these, these major editions, to make sure they're performing well for the use that's expected. And this is a very, this space is multiple uses, as we know, for the chorus, band, musicals, presentations, verbal presentations and such, so we have to try to accommodate multiple uses. We also are working with, besides the acoustical engineer, we're working with a theater designer who had developed the layouts, circulation to begin with. They also work on the rigging, lighting position, stage curtains, and we're working with an audiovisual consultant for this space, which works on whether the video presentation's going to be, the large projection screen that you see, who's specified that, and these recommendations for the sound system. We're working on that. So we have all these specialists, specialists, I guess you could say, help with all of this thing.
And so, and so they work closely with our director of performing, Lawrence Andrew Griffin, and Michael Hunter, who's our most technical person, so they've been back and forth throughout, and, and they're pleased that this, this will provide that flexibility to do, to do all of the types of music and performance that we need.
Did we, did we, when we were first talking about this, didn't someone not come to us and ask for a specialty for that, or was it for special services groups that might come through, or was it, does anyone, that was an early, one of our early meetings, someone asked for a specific, a specific item to be addressed? I'll think about it, but I would imagine these people would be able to answer that question for us.
You know who I think it was? I think it was the, the hearing impaired portion, because it's, it's, it's something that, you know, Paul was also looking at to, to be able to have the apps that helped him to assist in listening, and the gentleman who helps with SDTV, is it, his name is?
Victor Pontus?
On the, my, I think.
Mr. Noah?
Mark Hornstein, I think he was the one that came in and was a...
Well, I know someone was, there were a couple people who mentioned it to us, I just wanna make sure that we ask that question when we're talking to all these specialists, if you know what.
Well, this, this is really good to hear, because it's all about sound, this whole project, and I get essentially what you said, that what we have here is it, is it truly the state of the art, from acoustic standpoint, facility here in our community, with probably better acoustic engineering acoustics than any other public space in the town of Simpsburg. And I would hope...
It's really the state of the art, I can't, I can't speak to, to what's better while searching up, thinking all this stuff down.
And so I would hope that when we get to the point of presenting this to the public, I mean, that's a really important point.
I don't mean to be in much, is there a way you can pause it on that entrance hallway for me for a minute? I'm just wondering if you can help me understand, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking you're moving 350 kids in and out in this hallway that looks like you go two by two.
Yeah.
Right there?
Yep.
So it is kind of deceiving, we wanted to bring you around the front so you could get the view of looking at all the seats, looking at the control room, but in reality, I think students are going to quickly...
Right here, there's a cross aisle.
Go through that cross aisle.
So you would have both ways to go.
How wide is that? I think is what she's really asking.
This is, I think, close to five, it's over five feet here, from the narrowest point at the column here.
But I don't really see them funneling down that walkway all through the stage.
So you're saying there's enough, because the way the video looks, it looks like you gotta all the way to the front and then cross in front of the stage.
No, that's just the path we took here, if you, if you go forward a little bit, when we get to the front of the stage, I think I'll be able to explain that for you.
Yeah, because it's not just the students, it's the public that's...
That's what, right, exactly. So if you pause here, this is a cross aisle right here, so there's the door that's gonna connect to the school, this is the door that we just came from that's gonna connect to that lobby space.
Okay.
There's a five-foot cross aisle here, the aisle we just walked here, plus the aisle here. Most people, I think, are gonna come in, you can also come from the back here, when you come through that door, there's actually access back here, so people could funnel through and come into these seats, could funnel, come this way. I don't really foresee people coming down the stairs to access this, I think everyone would probably funnel through this.
So there are three entrances to the, is that correct?
There are three entrance doors, two of them are generally off of the lobby, and one is off of the stairs.
What is the philosophy of the half-wall there?
This half-wall here?
Yeah.
There's actually seating right here.
Oh.
There's a handicap spot and companion chairs here, looks like on this side here, and same thing in the middle at the cross aisle.
Okay, that's, thank you, that makes me feel better, I was just thinking you're gonna try and get 350 kids down one little hallway, and that might take a long time.
And I'm getting all the kids out of seating.
And your frame references the high school with the bank of doors.
Right, right, you got the whole back of the auditorium open for access, and so that's why I'm just trying to understand how it's gonna flow.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, are we ready for the media center? So where we're coming in from the media center is if you were starting, you came through the front door and you're going straight down the hallway, just to give you reference to...
So across from the cafeteria, that hall?
Yep. Nope, the main entrance from the, on fire.
So you're coming in the main doors?
Coming down the main hallway. But you're going towards the cafeteria, the cafeteria's on your left, she said you're going through the cafeteria.
That's on the left, that's on the right, okay.
We're going to the right.
Yes.
Thought I did the same thing, Burke, let me see.
You, you from the top.
Mm-hmm. Try this.
That doesn't look very warm in one place.
That's the old office.
Oh, wow, look at them.
Oh, nice.
So you've got some display space as you're coming through. This is a connector piece that's connecting the existing building, now we're in new connector. Seating area, bookshelves, high glass here, we've got some booths that are for about four students. This is the main circulation desk area. This is what we call our campfire for maybe a larger group of kids. There's also individual seating.
She's very horny.
This space here is for entire class, that's looking into the maker space. That's also another space for classroom, that is operable partitions that you can close off if you wanted to have two groups at once in here. That is the audiovisual room that would have room for doing video presentations, a green screen to move on that. And then again, just the last view of the...
Is there quiet study space in there as well?
There's individual seating area, so if you want to do individual work, we try to look at going from individual student where they can just focus, to four student groups, to larger groups, to an entire class, so I think you've got the full range of flexibility for, for all students.
Are there public computers set up there, or is that just...
We have stations for computers, I can't say how the school's gonna use them and set them up in the future, but we're making sure that we have power, data, connections at various locations, so the hookup, hookup areas are there, help desk, obviously the circulation desk. There is, you know, there is Wi-Fi, wireless as well, there's charging carts in the, in the place so that students can use their...
So charging stations for the Chromebooks, kind of a thing?
Where is faculty located in, in this, in this layout?
So the circulation desk there, and then this space here is a workroom that has windows into the media center and into the maker space, so if somebody's in there, they can see both spaces.
Where does it connect to the maker space, that connects to the tech?
So the maker space is here, and then if you continue through, you're connecting into the tech ed.
Do you take us into the maker space or no?
No.
So this, so again, if you go back to this grid, you've sort of gone into the blue and sort of stopped, just looking towards, towards the, the family and center science wing.
How big are those doors as you walk in?
Those are each three foot eight.
Okay, so they're not double doors?
No, they're two separate, that would be on hold opens, if the fire alarm goes off, they would close, but we envision them really being pinned open, we'd want kids to be able to come in and out of the space.
Well, they're kind of small, they fit wheelchairs and stuff?
Oh, yeah, three foot eight, yeah.
Three? They look a little narrow.
Which is south, where does the sun come into that, into this building?
North is...
By the cafeteria.
It comes in the cow.
Yes.
The sun would come in the cafeteria across the halltop.
Right, so the cafeteria is right there.
It's south in the, this is north.
That's the north side of the hallway.
Right, so now we're headed north, and we're, we're looking straight onto this building.
You notice from east sun, too. So morning sun coming in this side.
Right, it's getting the eastern sun.
That's right.
It's not like it's dark in the north.
They're removable walls in those classroom areas, are there?
There's movable piano walls on...
So like an accordion?
You're about to see it come through, so that is one of the movable walls, they're just panels that can be slid on a track and closed the space off.
Oh, got it, okay, great.
There's two, there's one there and one there that would be closed up the space.
Are those classrooms, the individual, like, do middle school kids go to the library to do homework and to, like the high school does, and if they do, do they sit in those spots, or is there another spot where they're gonna sit? To sit and just plug in and do their homework and do just...
So there's multiple spaces for that, I think if there's a classroom...
Well, I saw the stumps, right, the stumps in the back, right?
Oh, yeah, you can sit there, there's chairs along these lines, kind of scattered throughout, that they'd be able to sit. There's like this high counter along here that would have power that they can plug into and sit, you can have a group of two or three, whatever you want there. There's power in this zone, there's power in the booth area.
A lot of the furniture, too, is going to be movable, we're, they requested, even though we're not quite in the furniture stage, we talked about having cat furniture on casters, even shelving on casters, so that the space could be reconfigured to...
That's great.
Push things out of the way, for instance, the, the tables and chairs that we see right up front in this view, they're set up so that perhaps a teacher would bring a whole class in, but that's movable furniture that can be moved out of the way and they can, they can set something else up, or set it up in a view, or a square and all of a sudden. So there's a lot of flexibility, I think, with the furniture, really the only fixed, the booth's surface in the corner, there in the far left in this view, and the circulation desk and what we call that campfire area with the bar stool seating and the bench seating, that's fixed. A lot of the other things are very flexible.
Are those the materials you think they'll be using?
We were thinking, so the, the library shelving is part of, what we call SSNA for infrastructure equipment, we're assuming at this point that they would be wood shelving. The fixed areas that we're building in right now, the circulation desk, would be a wood look plastic laminate, I believe it's, we weren't doing real, it wasn't real wood, it was a wood look plastic laminate, which is similar to a lot of the other cabinets, what we've done in the, the main office, for instance, that's a wood look plastic laminate, it's not a real wood cabinet. So that's a wood look, and I believe the counters are a solid surface material in and around the circulation desk. The, up at the top at the ceiling, there's panels of a wood look acoustical panel that I have a sample of. There's some sound absorption that goes on through, it's a perforated metal panel, but I don't know the perforated... But it matches very well with some of the, the plastic laminate, the wood look plastic laminate that we were using at the circulation desk, so this would be slopes following the, the slope of the roof, right underneath it, and helping boost it.
Question about books. Perhaps Doc knows, maybe somebody knows, how many books do we currently have in our library, and what's the capacity for books in this space?
We'd asked for a volume count from the school, I don't, I don't know if you know what it is.
I haven't had it analyzed yet.
I don't know, if you know what it is, I feel like fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, I think it was like fourteen and change, and I think we're, we have wiggle room.
Well, we all know that the old library, that's kind of nonsensical, to speak of the volumes that we have moved through that library, so...
I can say when we move, we're driving forward, that we...
We need a lot of space for those.
Whether or not the space devoted to actual books in this library is more, equal to, or less than the space devoted to books in the capital.
I actually don't know how it compares to what you have existing, except that we asked, how many books do you need here? So I don't know if that meant they're taking everything.
Our current library is very small.
Yeah, so, so we asked how many books were desired, and how many nonfiction...
It's about the size of a classroom.
And so on, so that we could even have different departments.
Have we answered that question yet, how many books we have to need?
I, I think it's about fifteen, almost fifteen thousand volumes that, that were requested, that includes all the different types, nonfiction, fiction, so we tried to develop where the areas might be for fiction, nonfiction.
And has that a significant increase in, in book count?
I don't know how it...
We don't have the answer to that tonight.
I don't, I don't think it was, Tom.
No.
It was a significant difference, I think there was some growth, some room for, for growth. Certainly, and certainly, I think there's room to buy some more books, and certainly how they're presented and how they're spaced out is, is, is different, just because the space is so very different than that narrow, long situation where you couldn't really have the student seating in the, in the groups. The major benefit of the, of the design of the so-called learning commons, when we had a consultant that, that came in and met with our students and our staff, was to really say, what, what, what do we need to do in that space? And we just had a very narrow space that you couldn't have, you couldn't bring a class down and, and work on a, a research lesson, you couldn't bring a team down, you couldn't have students working by themselves in groups, you couldn't do those because it was just all jammed in one small area, and the books was dominating kind of the, the whole half of, half of the space.
I understand that we need more space and we're gonna make utilize it, and I don't, I don't want to get too fussy about this, but books are books, and a lot, a lot of library research today is not done in books, a lot of library research today is, is done up on the internet, but still, I don't even know what our point of view is about books, from a, from, I don't know what our library, how our librarians feel about the idea of physical books today compared to ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty years ago, but I'm, I'm just wondering, do we have a strategy, a point of view about books?
I think that's a very good point, I think that for this meeting tonight, I think we might take, put that into a question going forward, because we have, I think what we found out here is that we have plenty of books, we have plenty of room for the books we have, and if we need more, is what they're telling us from the point.
And there is a need for books.
And there is a need for books.
It's a matter of what books and how that needs.
Yes, like for, a lot of my essays, teachers require that a source be a book. You, like for some essays that I've had to write, even in middle school, it's required that at least one source be an actual book, so there is still a need for book.
Like you're allowed to have X amount of web resources, but you need to have X amount of book resources, you have to, you're kind of forced to go find the written copies of the information you need, so...
It'd be nice to have them.
Well, since, since we're spending all this money to do a 21st century, 21st century media center, which is great, I, I just, as one board member, I, I would be very interested in what our point of view is.
I think...
About how we're going to use this new space for books.
I think...
I just wonder if we could have a discussion about that at some point.
I think going, in the future, I think that'd be great, we can talk to our librarians from the, and from the high school librarian who's already, has already organized their space, and I'm sure will be advising the junior high for their future space. So, yeah, we can, I think that's, we'll put that on our notes.
Can I just ask about the connection of the maker space to the tech ed wing? There is one door through one classroom, or multi, I just couldn't tell from...
Sure. The, so the media center connects to the maker space.
Is it right there?
This door right here.
Okay, there's, we can see it as a wood door.
Yes, that's...
So that's getting me into the maker space, yeah.
The maker space then links to a computer lab, which I believe is linked on your plan. There's a computer lab that's shared by tech ed spaces, by, by those program areas, so you could actually, it's kind of used as, I don't even wanna say support, but the maker space, you may go use computers in a nice, in a nice clean computer room kind of thing, and go back into the maker space and do some hands-on, you know, work and, and learning that way. So the computer lab can be a resource, or the maker space can be a resource, but those two connect together. The maker space does not connect directly to the coordinator.
Okay.
It would have to go through the computer lab to get to the coordinator.
Right, you're coming through one space or another to get to it.
Sure, either through the media center or through the computer lab.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that is our interior, exterior overview, and I guess we'll now turn to the budget reconciliation that, that was done, Dave, Tracy from Downs, they did a reconciliation last Friday along with the professional class at the House of Booze, and that is offered in this latest version of our... Now, I only made up this, Dave, I know you had, I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't hand that out, I could make a copy of that. It's really just a, a smaller version of, of the sheet that you have there, more of the summary.
Where's Mike Dunham, we need him. Tara, wouldn't, wouldn't Mike have a field day with us?
Unbelievable.
Yeah, I just wonder, there's probably nobody here that knows the answer to this question. Two hundred dollars per square foot is the total, for the total project. And I wonder how that compares with the cost per square foot that we did to high school.
Oh, it's so hard to compare.
Is it?
It's so hard to compare because it's a different.
Oh, it was a long time ago, too.
It's a long time ago, but it's got different needs.
Is there any benchmark at all that, that we use to say, okay, two hundred dollars per square foot, that sounds about right?
Oh, well, you use the norms of the industry for the structure that you're building. Yes. No, it's not.
Did you get one? Thank you.
That makes, that's great.
Kind of, I guess, to kind of walk through a little bit of our process of really estimating. What we do is, we start with a process of estimates, I guess, and then making the estimates along with the process. And so we do track those to see how we go from halfway up and down. And we manage that with a design and estimating contingency and then have the reconciliation meetings with the other estimating firm to kind of come together in one room and then hash it out over six, eight hours period of time basis. So when we first met on Friday, we were about 2.3% different in our cost analysis of how we did the project. And so we sat there and discussed with the engineers and the architects to kind of, you know, understand the scope and then the pricing of that. So at the end of the day, we do come up with a value of construction costs that'll be about nineteen million, six twenty-seven, eight eleven. And that's the, the construction costs that you see here. And then that's the bricks and mortar of the, of the, of the building. And then you have the soft costs that's underneath it, that includes technology and design fees and things like that. So with that, we have a total cost of twenty-three million, eight twenty-four, five fourteen. So with, with those numbers in our construction cost, we are, we are carrying a little bit of a fluctuation that gives us a, some management, management tool that we use during the bidding process. You know, what, what we're forecasting is not the low number or the high number. We're trying to be in the middle of the range of the bidders that are, that are going to be bidding on the project. We'll be putting out these bid packages that you'll, with the contractors, roughly about, you know, I think maybe twenty-five to twenty-six bid packages. You'll have five, six bidders per bid package. When that comes in, we will sit down with the low two bidders, scope them out, and then create our guaranteed maximum price for it. So then, so that's kind of in a nutshell, very quickly, the process that we follow. You'll see on this one summary sheet, there's seven add alternates that we have there. And so those add alternates are also a management tool for us. They're totaling up around five hundred thousand dollars. So if you looked up at the design and estimating contingency, that is roughly five hundred thousand dollars. And then escalation of 1.5%. We have escalated our, our trade numbers up above, the kind of what we feel is going to happen in the marketplace. So with our bids coming in and that fluctuation of the, you know, four and a half percent, that's also equal to your add alternates. So if we have wonderful bid results, you get all your add alternates right rolled up into it, it's kind of, they're kind of balancing out, okay? So with that, if we are shy of a percent or two in our bid results, you can manage some of your add alternates to kind of click them in. What we would do is recommend prioritizing some of those, if we, if that is the case, to look at our contingencies that we're also currently have, a construction contingency. You also have an owner's contingency as well. So when we get halfway through the project, we get out of the winter, we get out of the ground, and we get everything up, and we haven't hit any of the unknown items that are underground or something like that, then that gives you a contingency factor that you can also put an add alternate in there as well. So we feel very confident that we're on track, we're on schedule, and we're on budget. And so we're making our recommendation to go to this date tomorrow and, and have this funded by them.
So I'm handing out the detail of the soft cost line item, that's four million dollars to go in that summary. An update on the soft cost that we need to manage. It's a front and back document. If you turn to the second page, you see it goes up to four million, one ninety-six. We have an owner's contingency of a little over five percent, or a little over one million dollars. So that's in addition to those contingencies that, that Dave highlighted, just above the soft costs.
Burke, what's, what's the total amount for this project that was presented and approved by the Board of Finance?
Twenty-three million, nine sixty-five, six twenty. You see that, just below that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And so currently, we're showing that we're under by one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ten.
Then Burke, can you, maybe I'm just reading this wrong, so on the big sheet.
Yes.
See a variance of two hundred and eighty-three thousand?
That was our variance from the previous phase of estimate, when we went from design development, that tracking tool that we were using.
Yes, right.
Can I just ask? I looked at the big sheet. It's talking about toilet compartments and bathroom equipment. We're adding a bathroom, renovating a bathroom? Where, where is that coming in? Because I just don't see it.
Okay, so we have a small public bathroom that would be right off of the, the front, the front lobby.
In the vestibule?
When you first come in, the door would be off of that, it would be opposite where you go in the main office now.
Okay.
So that was something that Scott hooked up. He started that wasn't in the first design, but I felt that it was important to have to provide guests and parents that they could go, you know, going down in and around.
So if you're coming in for a meeting in the office, you don't have to get out into the building, you're staying, you're secure.
You can go across, stay in that secure area.
That's a great idea.
As a matter of fact, what's crazy is curtains cost more.
Upstairs, we'll be grading faculty staff, whole new kind of faculty room, including bathroom, ADA bathroom.
Okay.
And the girls locker room needs a new restroom.
Yes.
They need a new one.
You didn't have to add new bathrooms for the auditorium?
Not appropriate now. They moved over last time, they moved over into the boys' side.
Oh, okay.
We did.
Oh, we didn't give them one then?
We just, we just made, in phase two, that was really just to make it functional. And this was always the plan, to come back in phase three.
And fix, fix that.
Do it in.
I was going to say, because I remember my daughters being in there, and I didn't remember, but that.
There's enough bathrooms for the auditorium?
Just done those calculations.
We did a plumbing count to make sure that the number of people in the auditorium is okay, there's calculations due for building code.
Right.
So it works, we did not add specific bathrooms. But there are some right across the hall.
They're right here. They're right, the green hallway. Right off the green hallway. That's what I was trying to say, but it's a little small.
Next to the van.
They're not, yeah. I didn't know if that was banned or something else.
Burke, is this, these expense, this is on the big sheet for the, the auditorium column, totals or subtotal there of five point, about five point five million and six point one million roughly for total cost? Is that, is that pretty much in line with what the number was when we were, I mean, there was a debate about the auditorium. Is that pretty much the same number?
It is.
Uh-huh. It didn't come in?
If you'll remember, the motion was to actually reduce it by to eighteen million, I think, the overall value of the project, which is right about that.
I see. Okay.
Okay.
Justice prevailed.
Anyone have any more questions? Specific thoughts, interests, or?
Detail.
We got people here. Today's the day to ask them.
This is here.
What a difference from when some of us may or may not have been in that building as students, so.
Or went to school in that building.
Exactly.
Same.
So we'll go to the state tomorrow. We have all of our local reviews, and we had the Lloyd Building Committee vote earlier. They've asked that the motion that's been read and approved.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that the Board of Education approves the final plans and project manual as prepared for bidding, along with the professional cost estimate for the Henry James renovation project.
Second. Elizabeth Haver?
Hi.
Opposed?
Wanted to be hit on that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. And we look forward to future conversations about it.
So I don't forget that this is actually the last signature in the process.
See all the deal right now.
All right. Look at her, she doesn't even hesitate. I'm trusting it. So Burke can go home now?
No. Got the quarterly and the audit report.
Oh, no. Sorry, Burke. Thank you all for coming in. We really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, everybody.
It's a very special project to us. I really liked that curvy bookcase.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Those are really nice. I like that.
You're all wishing you could go back to Henry James now, aren't you?
Looks good. Looks good. Now we're moving on, oh, is Burke ready? Neil's up, oh, Neil.
Neil is ready.
You ready, Neil?
Well, I rarely feel upstaged by Burke's items. Usually Aaron does it to me. So fewer guests, fewer visuals, but hopefully we'll have as many interesting questions as we just did because it's an important presentation. Really, the largest section of the budget as we unfold these in, in various presentations is the personnel costs. So we've obviously done some work with the capital improvement projects. Sue presented, all of our principals gave, gave a budget preview through the fall. Sue talked about special ed two weeks ago, and, and this is really a roll-up of where we are in terms of personnel drivers. So it is a couple of slides. I, I, I call it personnel presentation, but it's also still a little mix of an enrollment presentation because enrollment drives the budget. So we start with a few slides to give us some historical context, and then we'll go into by level, elementary and secondary and district, sort of what, what is in our proposal that would eventually be in the superintendent's budget. So we start with historical enrollment as part of the district context. And what you'll see on many of the slides that are in this presentation, just to get you used to format, is two thousand eight, nine was kind of the high point of enrollment and staffing, just about ten years ago in the Simsbury Public Schools. So then pick a point about halfway between then and now, and looking at where we are currently and where we're projecting. So what this slide shows you is, over that course of time, we're down almost exactly nine hundred students. And that breaks down really closely to five hundred at the elementary, two hundred at the middle school, and two hundred at the high school. So just to say where you can, and I'll show you through the presentation, that we have captured efficiencies in all of those areas. A little harder to capture efficiencies, seven grades K six across five schools, often a little harder to get the economies of scale. And you'll see two hundred down at the middle school, which really is reflected in the number of teams that we have, and that's how we capture efficiencies. And then as the high school, we really have to look at departmentally. So each of them gets a slightly different look as we look at efficiencies. Again, now going from the enrollment to staffing, where, where are we? And you can see that we are down staffing in all areas, not, not equivalent to what the enrollment decline is, but on average, in the eight percent range of staffing from our high point about ten years ago. You'll see the, the certified has been down more precipitously in the last five years, but the non-certified has crept up in the last five years. So that's, that's something we continue to keep an eye on as we enter our staffing conversations with principals. With the overall decline in FTE, the, the next to last column, being about fifty-five positions fewer now than we had ten years ago. And then, just to note on the bottom, that twelve of those fifty-five have come in the past two years, that as we've continued, most of them two years ago when we were in our uncertainty about the state budget. Less last year, but it's about twelve over the past two years. During that same time, veteran board members know how much we've enhanced the program at the same time that we faced shrinking enrollment. So divided this one up by regular education, certainly our reading intervention program, our adding to elective offerings at Simsbury High School was a very significant commitment by this board. Full-day kindergarten was one of the ways that we reinvested our elementary teachers that were reduced. Certainly, Aaron has presented to you about the instructional coaches, and we've changed the schedule at both Simsbury High School and Henry James, which had some associated staffing costs with it. In special education, certainly, teachers and paraeducators at, at all levels really need to infuse some expertise into our Ready, Set, Go program about four or five years ago. That was an enhancement. Elementary social workers that this board has supported over the last couple of years, and preschool positions we've needed to add. So all of that in terms of the way you've responded, and the same time that we've had all those budgets under two percent increases. So the, the last context setter is this kind of roll forward of what I refer to as the personnel drivers. This is a format we've used in the budget that Mr. Curtis set up a few years ago, and I think it's really helpful to show us where increases are coming. Obviously, anytime we talk about personnel, it comes in negotiated contracts. So the biggest of those, obviously, given the size of the teaching force, is the impact of negotiated teachers' contracts that, this is the last year of their three-year contract that we're budgeting for. Certainly administrators, SFEP is both secretaries and para-professionals, our nurses we negotiated last year. And then we have, we set a placeholder for unsettled contracts, which right now are our custodians and our unaffiliated personnel. So those are the costs, the increases that are for the top four already committed to, the fifth being a placeholder for upcoming negotiations. Then some other items that I consider part of personnel, but that aren't finalized yet, the most important being the employee insurance. And as you know, we can expect an increase in insurance. Burke will be presenting on, about that in our workshop in a couple of weeks. So I don't have a number there, but that is going to be in the several hundred thousand dollar range. It's not, it's so zero is a little, I'm, I'm warning you, this is a caveat about how we're looking at this right now. So on the, so that you could see that that is about one and a half million dollars commitment added to the budget. And the bottom, what we know right now is, we've always used a placeholder to say, when we have a retirement and have a position we're going to replace, what's the associated savings by using a, by hiring a teacher that's perhaps less experienced? We don't, we don't say, almost all teachers that retire are at the top of the range. It would be very tempting to say all the teachers we're going to hire are at the bottom, and we're going to save a lot of money. But that's not how we hire in Simsbury. So we take a placeholder of about, of about a twenty-five thousand dollar difference. So eight teachers times twenty-five thousand, we're budgeting for two hundred thousand. So when you look at that, with the associated percentages, you say, up, up and down on a roll-forward basis is a little less than two percent, which is near. a roll-forward basis is a little less than two percent, which is near the guideline that we've been given by the Board of Finance, right? With no other accounts being discussed here. This is just, um, salary, uh, accounts at this point.
Neil, what is your best estimate at this time? Uh, on what were there currently are zeros? What is your best estimate of what's going to be in there?
The, the only number that would be significant would be the, the employee health insurance. The others are much smaller numbers. Um, Burke, I'm going to turn to you and say-
Yeah, so the, the, um, the thing that's a little bit different about the OPEB and the pension this year is that early on this fall with the Board of Finance, we talked about the need to change the investment assumptions for the town and, and Board of Ed pension and OPEB. So there is an appetite to try to, um, be more realistic about what those earnings might be and that will have a budget impact, but we talked about the, the concept of them holding us harmless for that as they have done in prior years where they have said, yes, you know, we would like to, to, uh, increase the, the, uh, contribution to be more prudent and to be more, uh, conservative in, in how we budget for those. So I don't know what those numbers will be, those will be actuarially, um, determined and it will be larger, like I said, because of interest rates that are not as high now.
And they will, but they will not impact our budget?
What I'm saying is that the conversations that, that, uh, we had with the Board of Finance, Director of Finance, Amy and myself, heard them say that they would, they would be willing to hold us harmless if they're going to increase this burden by being more, um, conservative on, on how we budget for both pension and-
They would be willing to, does that, is that a commitment?
They've done that, they've done that in the past. I mean, that's, that's all the initial conversation that we've had, so there would have to be more conversation if we go in a different way. I mean, we have a history of doing that, so there's no reason for me to believe we wouldn't.
That was part of the tribal meeting.
Thank you.
That was part of that.
The employee insurance number is the larger line item number, Tom? And that'll be, I mean, I'm not going to commit to what the number would be at this point, but that'll be a minimum of three hundred thousand dollar increase.
So that would mean that our, our roll-forward personnel drivers will exceed the, the allowable two percent?
Prior to looking at-
Yeah.
Retirement reductions and, and other pieces of the budget. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to move forward to the second part of the presentation, which is really what the proposals would be. Again, this is a process where we meet with our principals, get all of their feedback about positions that they, um, want to consider and make some decisions about what should be supported in the budget. So starting at the elementary level, again, the, the enrollment context and what's the associated classroom teachers with that enrollment? So you can see at the high point ten years ago when we were at twenty-five hundred students, we were at just about a hundred and ten classroom teachers. And then you see a pretty significant drop in enrollment and yet almost no drop in elementary classroom teachers. And that would be when we instituted full-day kindergarten, doubling the number of kindergarten teachers that you have and institute our reading intervention program. So it's only after that, that you start to realize the, see the, the decrease in the classroom, um, teachers and, uh, in, two years ago, we were at the low point that we had, um, with ninety-six classroom sections across the five schools. Last year, we planned to be at ninety-six again and you'll remember, we added three kindergarten teachers over the summer and had to adjust our budget accordingly. So we are currently at ninety-nine and projecting for one additional for next year that is part of the, the proposal. So as we look at what came forward that we are recommending, um, in the superintendent's budget eventually of what should go forward, is that one classroom teacher, right now we're directing it for an oversized cohort at Tooten Hills School. The only, um, above class size cohort, it's the current fourth moving to fifth. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about that cohort in the Tooten Hills community. Um, it's something that, um, Maggie Seidel advocates for strongly with the Personnel Department to, um, add a teacher to that cohort. Uh, and right, in this early budget, we believe it's something that needs to be supported. Of course, we'll continue to monitor the class size, um, as summer unfolds. The other, um, building off a presentation that Aaron made a few months, about a month ago, is the elementary world language. You'll recall that last year we had a retirement, uh, fairly late in the budget process that caused us to take a step back from where we were with elementary world language, with our principals saying, instead of just filling that position, let's take a step back and look at we are, where we are with the program. It allowed us to take a hard look at the curriculum and expectations, look at some of our peer districts and what their elementary world language offerings are. And at this point, we would like to budget for an, the add-back of one position. It may take some additional borrowing from the secondary level to fully implement, but this would get, um, uh, two times a week of, uh, Spanish, it's, it's all Spanish instruction for sixth grade, two times a week for fifth grade, and one time a week for fourth grade. So it's a significant enhancement to the-
At forty-five minutes apiece.
At forty-five minutes apiece, so. And we have had, we have a very interesting scheduling and staffing chart to make that work with the teachers that, 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 um, we have. So, uh, we're really excited about that proposal and bringing forward a, a, a more robust world language program at the elementary level. Uh, just a small dollar item, but I wanted to mention it because it was important to our principals. One of the things we do, um, with our teachers is, um, teachers who stay beyond their contractual time, there's a small, um, hourly rate that they can fill out a time card to run something, you know, an after-school club, whether it's a homework club, a Lego club, an interest club that kids in the elementary schools, uh, want to participate in. Uh, our elementary principals, uh, many of them exhaust those accounts and they, they say, I, I don't have any more that I can offer. So this is actually an infusion of money into account to run more after-school clubs for students, uh, for a small amount of dollars, pretty big payoff in terms of what many of the elementary principals would like to do. And then lastly, uh, as we continue to have a focus on math at the elementary level, um, we already have math tutors. Most of them are in the range of twenty to twenty-four hours a week, depending on the school. This takes each of the schools, um, and this increase brings them up more to, uh, near, near full-time positions for the, so this is really a dollar add to get across five schools to, uh, more full-time math intervention specialists. So each of these slides have a total dollar figure and I'm going to break it down several ways, um, at the end of the presentation. At the secondary level, we'll take it separately, looking at Henry James first. Again, the, the ten-year ago high point of the enrollment was eight thirty-eight and we are down, um, next year at six thirty, so a minus two hundred and eight students, although you will note from last year to this year, it's actually a slight increase of twenty students. Um, but on the right-hand column, that increase of twenty students, we believe, um, will be easily absorbed, so you are seeing a flat staffing proposal for Henry James. Just to demonstrate what that looks like, um, it's, it's trying to say how many teams are associated with each grade, um, how many students would be on that team, and then you divide that number by five to get an average class size. So you can only do this a couple of ways. Your larger grade for next year will be seventh grade, three hundred and twenty-three students. Smaller grade next year at Henry James is eighth grade with three hundred and seven. The, the two ways to divide it is you either put three full teams in seventh grade and get class sizes, you can follow it across and see what those would be. Or there is a way that you can make hybrid teams and we've had hybrid teams at Henry James before. Um, and if you did them exactly equally, equally at two-point-eight teams for each grade, there's a slightly different look at the class sizes. Point of the slide being both of them work without adding any staffing. Both of them meet class size guidelines. And just, I'll note on the bottom of that slide, um, and one of the reasons why we want to be, um, uh, conservative, if you will, is that the next cohort coming in the grade six for next year is even smaller at two hundred and eighty-seven students. So we'll have, uh, a three-oh-seven going out and a two-eighty-seven coming in. Um, similarly, at Simsbury High School, you'll, you'll see down two hundred students over uh, ten years across four grades. Um, from two thousand eight, nine to the midpoint at two thousand twelve, thirteen, there's actually an increase in staffing. That can be tied to the addition of electives in the eight-period day. So even though there weren't more students, we added staffing. And then in the last five years, really started to find some significant efficiencies, um, as we, um, captured retirements at the high school. So, uh, class sizes have remained in the, in the range by and large. You'll see that for next year, what we're proposing is an additional cut of two total FTE at Simsbury High School. Here, so here's what that looks like at the secondary level. The add to Simsbury High School would be a social worker. And in both Andy's, Andy O'Brien's presentation and, uh, Sue Lemke's presentation, this was a top, uh, request from, uh, the, both the high school and special education. As the success of our elementary social worker program, um, you, you asked the question when Sue presented two weeks ago, how many are there currently? And for fourteen hundred students, there is currently one social worker at Simsbury High School. So this is, uh, an additional position and, um, I didn't say it on the elementary slide, but that, that eighty-eight thousand dollar budgeting figure is, um, a placeholder that we use for a, a, a mid-range hire of a teacher, including benefits. Uh, the other positions are associated with, add positions are associated with Henry James. One is not so much an add, it's a, a math tutor position that currently exists, but we pay for it right now out of Title I funds and Henry James is not going to be eligible for Title I funds starting next year. So, um, it would be nice if you could just borrow your Title I funds from other schools. The rules are very stringent. Aaron Murray reminded me when I wanted to move money around. And, uh, really, we have to take this into our operating budget as a really important resource that we, we need, um, as part of our, our math focus. And then last, uh, on the adds is a computer technician. Um, it's, uh, looking at this segment of the workforce, um, you know, our, our computer techs, uh, we, we believe that the, the one-to-one, uh, implementation at Henry James, mirroring the high school that's planned for next year, this becomes the right time to add in, um, a, a computer tech. So that placeholder is for a full-year salary. Computer techs work during the summer too, um, plus benefits. So on the, uh, reduction side on the secondary level, we're going to budget and we think this is very, um, a responsible number. Simsbury High School is down sixty students next year. The incoming ninth grade class is projected to be two hundred and ninety-six. That's the lowest number we've seen in a long time and we think we can gain, um, efficiencies through enrollment-driven reductions. Um, as you know, we typically do, we'll look at departments where there might be a retirement. And is that a place where we say, hey, well, well, there's a retirement, we could capture that retirement, um, and not replace those sections in that department? Um, and that's a meeting that happens in February where we look at every single department and how many sections they need and make the absolute best decisions we can, not only for twenty nineteen, but nineteen-twenty, but looking forward too. Like where do we anticipate retirements? So maybe we don't take a cut in one department this year because we know a retirement's coming the year after.
Yeah.
And that's part of what we do during that meeting, um, as we, as we plan.
A related question, maybe for Aaron. Will there, do we anticipate any significant curriculum changes at Simsbury High School next year that might require, uh, the hiring of specialized teachers that we don't currently have? No?
I know it's not for this, this budget year, but when everything is complete at Henry James, is that going to require any additional staff for the media center, for the auditorium custodial or, or media center specialists that we should be just kind of thinking about for the, for the following year?
I mean, I think certainly we've typically responded to a square footage total for-
Custodial.
Custodians. Um, so the adds on this are about fourteen thousand square feet. And, um, I haven't had a discussion yet about library media. Um, I certainly think you're going to need some auditorium support.
Right.
Um, Michael Hunter has more than a full-time schedule right now at Simsbury High School. There's no, I mean, I'm sure he'll support that area, but he couldn't do both.
Right, right.
Um, so there's certainly, I think there will be some-
Okay.
Associated adds. Uh, additional staffing proposals that don't fall to any particular building, um, you'll remember from a presentation that I did, updating you about school safety, that one of the proposals that we, um, were contemplating at that time is a district director of school safety. Um, we envision this modeled after a similar position in many of our peer districts, Glastonbury, South Windsor, West Hartford, are, are working off of a model where, uh, retired law enforcement for the most part, although it doesn't need to be retired law enforcement, but, um, those are people often interested in continuing to work after they are taking their, their pension from law enforcement and have, some have had experience in schools, others have not. Um, but we believe, um, that to, this is a area of the school district work that's not going to get smaller and there's a significant amount, uh, happening in terms of working with our principals. Um, quite frankly, feel that expertise around school safety, focus on, on school safety and, and having the right kind of person. I went and met personally with the, um, person from Glastonbury, um, and learned a lot about the work that he's doing. And it's, it's a, it's a very smart investment, my belief, for the school district and I know that, um, as we've talked as a central office team, that this is a proposal that we want to bring forward. We've all, Matt has also had some conversation with Chief Bolter about this position and it's one that the police are supportive of as well. So, um, it's, uh, I, I'd like to come back later and show you a little more about what a potential job description. I've gotten job descriptions from other districts, but it's one we want to, um, present as a potential for the, for the Board of Ed budget.
Is it your sense that addition of, uh, safety, uh, school safety directors is a phenomenon that's going on across the state and even across the nation these days?
I don't know about nationwide. I know several districts that Neil mentioned have moved in this direction. And, you know, when we get deeper into the process, Neil can tell you how, it, it's a resource I think we can use in a multitude of places, not just to get the expertise, but to help defer the load from both Burke and Neil so they can focus on some of their main core functions as well, which I think will be really important. But I know South Windsor is new to it, I think, two years or a year.
Mm-hmm.
Glastonbury has had it in place for some time.
Is there any possibility that in addition to this district director of school safety that we would, we have two SROs at the moment, do we not?
Yeah.
Is there any possibility we'll go to three ever?
I think there is in time. It's part of the conversation I had with, uh, Chief Bolter in terms of, uh, a little bit of prioritization of work and, and what we need to focus on, that this would be a logical first step in a conversation next year about a shared, SRO by shared. I mean, we split that cost with the town normally. Um, we would look at potentially next year to split amongst our elementary schools.
And then, uh, on the other side, looking at potential reductions, um, we, I presented briefly last year, at that time, our substitute coordinator who has been, um, in our district for a long time and had done a terrific job, but we were, we've, we were planning the transition to an automated system that most other districts use. Um, uh, our substitute coordinator is retiring this coming June. We already took the FTE, which is why you don't, we're, we're paying her through our substitute fund this year. She continues to work for it, thank goodness. She helped us through the transition to the new system and is continuing to work as a substitute until June and then we'll take her retirement. So there is a dollar savings associated, um, without the, as I said, we already captured the FTE a year ago. Uh, and then the other is in that to-be-determined area of non-certified staff. That obviously, um, as you know, covers all of our other, um, groups, our secretaries, custodians, para-professionals, um, nurses. I mean, it's, it's looking at where we can find efficiencies and again, typically when retirements and vacancies come, you know, asking the question of, is this a position that we can, um, look at and not- of, is this a position that we can look at and not replace? What would be the impact of not replacing this particular position?
Would that be mainly, will this be done through retirements as well?
Almost always able to do it through retirements. And, you know, it's also looking, I think it's looking, as we saw that that non-certified number crept up over the last five years, most of that is in the form of paraprofessionals. And Sue's presentation two weeks ago talked about the importance of the paraprofessionals that we've added. But there are vacancies and retirements in that. And there are schools where we have double digits in terms of paraprofessionals. So it's asking the question, if you have 15 paraprofessionals assigned to a certain school, what would it look like if you had 14? And you took that retirement and going through those staffing charts, and it's needs of children, and it's got to be done really carefully, but it can be done.
Tom, I also mentioned in my previous presentation that we always are looking at service delivery, and we want to make sure that we're being efficient with how we deliver services. So there might be some efficiencies that we can gain.
Thank you.
So I just wanted, hopefully, the couple of other ways that I now sliced this up are helpful for you. Wanted to give, be able to give some themes, which I hope will be helpful as we're, certainly as we're presenting to the other boards and talking about what's in this budget that's not just a roll forward. What are we doing that's not simply a roll from 2018, '19? Category of academic enhancements by adding elementary world language, classroom teacher that's necessary, and those math interventions at the elementary and middle. Safety and student support, certainly the social worker, I think, on the social, emotional needs of students. And obviously, it's just spoke about the director of school safety as, you know, looking at those needs of students and then adding in the computer technicians supporting a one-to-one implementation at Henry James and that request from our elementary principals for after-school stipends. But at the same time, the column of saying, are we looking at positions that can pay for those things that we want? And taking some responsible reductions associated with a turnover from one year to the next. The other way I kind of divided this up is to say, what are we adding certified and reducing certified? So this is all just a different way to summarize it. I tried to give you a couple of different methods, depending on which way your brain likes to look at it the best. And then at the bottom, additional non, additions on the non-certified side, followed by reductions on the non-certified side. Whichever way you add it up, it's almost a flat staffing proposal. In this particular, you know, you're up less than one position. What we budget here and what that number looks like by the time we open on August 30th is always going to have a little up or down. Now, that's never going to be an exact number. And so now to take the first slide from the beginning of the presentation and add back in, so all of the things at the top are the things that were on the first slide, followed by two more additions. All the certified additions are adding up to roughly $273,000, and the non-certified additions roughly $212,000. And then on the reduction side, in addition to accounting for the retirements, you're saying three certified reductions. Those are targeted for Simsbury High School. And the non-certified reductions that I just spoke about, again, you know, in that total, about a $300,000 between, I'm sorry, $500,000 between those two categories. And by doing it this way, it remains, we meet some priorities that our principals have identified and others in the district have identified, but we stay very close to that original number of a little less than two with everything else that needs to be considered in the budget.
But with the addition of the $300,000 or so, which is about four tenths of 1%, it pops us over the two.
You're going to be over and needing to look at some other accounts.
Correct.
And then last slide is to say, there are some other things we would like to kind of keep on the radar. They will not be in the budget that we're going to present. Maybe they will be if you want to talk more about them. HJMS wellness teacher. We've done an analysis of what it would take to get PE and health every day for kids at the middle school level for those two grades. And it would really take the addition of really just one teacher to that department. And what is a pretty crazy schedule of a mix of PE and health right now could become much more that you have your wellness teacher who teaches PE and health, and you have it every day like you do at the high school. And I think it's a proposal that's got a lot of bang for the buck. Next year, while that building's under construction, might not be the year to implement it. But it's something that we really want to get on the radar and something that if we were able to do it, we might go ahead if the savings allowed us to do it. Certainly, Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Peregrin in the counseling office have started conversations about how to get our kids out in the community a little more, doing internship experiences in junior and senior year. Are there local businesses that would want to kind of take some interested students under their wing and get out and, for credit, create some internship experiences? Some other towns near us have created such programs. If we were to move forward in this direction, it would really probably come from existing staffing within the school counseling department. As their caseloads shrink, the way a teacher's, the way the enrollment is shrinking, the needs of each department, can you carve out a position that would allow somebody to dedicate time to doing this work as opposed to a full guidance caseload?
Have they ever spoken to the Chamber of Commerce to work together on that?
They've had some initial discussions. But, you know, this is, this would really be, you know, when you're saying, we need, we're ready to do this work and devoting somebody's work time to taking the lead on it.
If we wanted to do something like that, how does that, does that come through to us? Does that go through the curriculum committee, or is that just kind of?
If we were ready to move on it, it would come through the curriculum committee.
Curriculum committee, and we could come here.
Really build that shared vision of it, I think.
Yeah. Just like a community-based would be cool.
And then lastly, I want to keep alive the conversation of a media specialist at Simsbury High School. This was, when I talk about sometimes to get to the budget number, we capture retirements. This was a decision we made last year on a captured retirement. We had some movement within the library media department, but what ended up happening is that there was a transfer out of Simsbury High School, and we now have a 1,400-student school with one library media specialist. We ought to be looking at that. If we're able to support that add back in this year, that would be great. If not, it's something that we definitely need to have as a priority in the next few years because that is an important program that we did. I will say that last year, when we took away the library media specialist, we did add back almost a full-time, non-certified position in the library. So we did try to make some balance of what we did, but the program is feeling some pains from that decision. And don't want to make this presentation without saying we didn't think about that.
You know, going back into history, what is the maximum number of media specialists we've had historically?
Two.
Two is the max.
Yeah.
And there was certified staff.
Two certified staff was the maximum.
Now we have one non-certified and one certified.
No, we have more non-certified than that. We have.
Supplemented that.
Yeah.
Do we have one at every elementary school?
We have 0.8 at Terrifil, and the others have a 1.0.
But Tom, this was, to your point, a couple of weeks ago, to kind of get a handle on some of the conversations that were going on that are outside of what's presented in the line item.
Got it. Thank you.
I have two questions. Any other?
The, two questions. The high school's computer tech person, is there a full-time, is that a full-time person there now, or who takes care of?
There's, I'm trying to think of how this is divided between the buildings. There's, there's more than one full-time person associated with the high school.
For the one-to-one.
And then there's, there's one currently at Henry James, no, the Henry James one is shared. So many of the computer technicians are shared among buildings. So what I'll do is get that information.
Couldn't make somebody a full-time person to handle the help with Henry James. We'd need an additional full person.
So I didn't bring that with me, but I will bring it to the workshop and let you see how our computer technicians are broken down. Because if I had the right book in front of me, it would be easy to tell you what it was, but I just don't have that in front of me right now.
And then my other question was about that wellness teacher. As, and just a little plug for that, as a parent, and who knows many parents at Henry James, that schedule is ridiculous. It is not, is way different than the high school schedule. And so I don't know why you said this wouldn't be good for next year because I think, if anything, it's for the kids' overwhelm, balance of daily life, this would improve them because it would allow them not to change schedules every other week, too, to be, my understanding is, it would allow more of a Simsbury High School.
Yeah.
More consistency.
Yeah.
So certainly.
I just wanted to make my plug.
Yeah. And it's something that Scott Baker and I started talking about pretty shortly after he took over as principal. I don't think, I think there's a lot of, as I said, bang for the buck with that. And I also think that in terms of where you want kids getting more wellness curriculum, it's right at those early adolescent years.
Of course, agreed.
Of like when you need to be doing, you know, they need to move, so they need some PE, and they need a health curriculum as the, as the issues of vaping and other things start to become, cell phones and everything else that are, you know, things that we're concerned about for our adolescents.
Yeah.
That's where we need to be putting that curriculum.
And consistency.
Is that the one driving factor of that two-week rotation at Henry James? So if we get rid of that, they go to a straight schedule?
No, there's a music piece, too.
The two of them.
So that doesn't alleviate the scheduling?
I wrote it down to talk to Scott about tomorrow.
Because I thought it, I thought it did. So that would be answering.
Does have a large piece of it, and some of our PE teachers are not certified in health as well. So we're looking for everyone to have that dual certification at the middle school so that they have one teacher. Right now, they're going, some kids are going between two teachers.
Correct, right.
And so we're looking to have it to be very consistent.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Sorry, no zoom-in visuals.
Thank you very much.
Gives me something to build for, for next year.
I did notice that these were hole punched.
Yeah, so that's for your budget book.
For your budget book.
You're big.
Take it home.
And if there are questions or any further detail board members want as we work our way to the workshop, you can email those, call us, whatever, and we can explore some of those position requests at a deeper level.
In your budget books, that you could, I mean, it came in your, in your email for all of you before the meeting, meeting prep. So it was a chance for you to look at it beforehand. I enjoyed having that.
Oh, I know.
But any feedback from you guys is also very helpful. You enjoyed seeing it beforehand and being able to be prepared.
Yes, very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thanks for getting that done. Moving on. Quarterly budget analysis.
Hey.
We are in the season.
We are in the season.
Our second quarter report, starting off with the revenue picture, not a whole lot of new information. Good news is, there's no bad information at this point in time. We will still be waiting for the excess cost grant information until late February. That's really the case each and every year. We did receive some of our Title I and Title II grant awards in January to go along with what was slightly positive IDEA grant information. And we know that we'll be at the 4% target for our choice grant for next year. So really, we're at this point waiting for the February 20th governor's budget. And it's a little bit later this year, so we're just going to have that starting point a little bit later on. So we're listening, working with town managers to try to see if there's any news out there, but we've yet to hear anything specific. On the expenditure side, you see that our pace of spending as compared to last year is very, very similar, slightly slower. And going on to the second page, do some highlighting on some of those areas of concern. In particular, you'll see that instruction and insurance and pension, we talked about last time as we started the school year, we had some staffing in the instructional area that we did not plan for. But fortunately, we have fewer participants in our insurance and favorability there. So we're actually showing that we've done a budget revision, so $200,000 more into the instruction category and $200,000 coming out of the insurance and pension. So we think that's going to make us pretty accurate for the balance of this year. In terms of what's coming in the second half of this fiscal year, we still don't know. Operational plant is an area of concerns that I've spent a lot of time highlighting here. We had the latest in the 10 or 11 seasons where our group purchasing of fuels, both the heating fuel and our diesel fuel for our buses, as well as propane and those various items, all of those fixed contracts where we lock in. That happened quite a bit later this year, and unfortunately, the market just wasn't able to be as favorable. We had some increases there. Regarding electricity, when we set the budget last year, we were excited about locking in on the electricity side for multiple years. And we had a pretty unusual situation where we actually had a contract, the way many of these are written, has some sort of market, market caveats, which they were able to actually get out of the contract with us. So we had to go back out to bid, and we worked cooperatively with the town of Simsbury. So our new fixed contract would be for 34 months. And as I've outlined here, unfortunately, it's at a somewhat higher rate. And, you know, that's just something that is going to be, we're going to have to watch closely throughout this year. Both the experience of a pretty, pretty cold winter year over year has increased some of our natural gas costs. So that's an area of concern as we get throughout the year. And lastly, out of district tuition, we know while the pace of our spending has been somewhat slower, we've actually encumbered more costs at the same point in time than we did last year. So we're going to watch that closely as we get through the end of the year and hope that those excess cost reimbursements come in favorable as they did last year. So those are the highlights for this quarter. And we'll be getting updated projections for the end of this year as we get farther along in the budget process next month.
Just to make sure I understand this, I'm remembering, Matt, that last year, I think I'm remembering that we did have some funds that were not used.
Right.
That had been budgeted, and we were able to use those funds to offset some of our increases in the following year. Is that correct?
So actually, we didn't need to use them in this past fiscal year. We had them there.
We had them. We didn't need.
We're going to talk at the budget, not to cut you off at the budget workshop, one of the line items we're going to put on is to talk about the non-lapsing fund.
Got it, okay.
We had thought we were going to have to utilize the non-lapsing fund last year for insurance and I believe transportation with the two items. We didn't need to. Those dollars rolled forward. We have $350,000 in that non-lapsing account, which is a joint approval account with the Board of Finance. That could very well be something that comes into play as we talk about differentials and where we are. So we'll hit that more at the workshop.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just had a question. What is, I know I'm familiar with the term Title I, but what is Title II?
Erin, I think it relates to.
Professional development.
Okay.
Anyone else? Great report. Thank you so much. You've had a lot going on this week.
One more. One more to go.
Let's see, how you do?
That's one more. Okay. So the audit, the audit report, just, I believe it was just last week at the Board of Finance, Shapiro did their summary and report to the Board of Finance about the audit. This is our shortened version summary overview. And you can see that year over year, there was a positive variance with the town and the Board of Education in excess of $2,000,000, $2,157,000. And all of that differential was basically lower. And all of that differential was basically lower expenditures, is what this kind of first, first line summarizes. So when you work, work out what, what our prior general fund balance was and the new balance based on that surplus, it's over $16,000, $16,794. But then of that amount, we have certain amounts that are assigned balances and committed balances. So you see that breakout where it says $385,000 is the committed amount, and the assigned is 1.9 million. That non-lapsing account is the 385,000, just to highlight that for you. So ultimately, once you, once you exclude those areas, your unassigned general fund balance is 14.3 million. And we had a positive year end, and the total from the, the public school operating budget was 28,123 that was unexpended last year. Moving on to the second page, we highlight in the capital non-recurring budget, we see a pretty, pretty stable fund balance, just about three-quarters of a million dollars. Didn't really change all that much. And then in terms of management letter comments, we've, we really, thanks to Kira Sheehan, our current, our Board of Ed accountant and budget analyst, again, we did not have any management comments of things on the Board of Ed side that really needed to be changed or looked at. These general comments relate to both the board and the town, and they've been there for several years, as you've probably seen. We have the accounting procedures manual that they'd like to see both the town and Board of Ed develop further, and we're still working to make that a more formal document. And then the fraud risk assessment comment, they essentially recommend that of every municipal client, saying it would be a great idea for the town and the board to, to hire an outside assessment. And that's still something that I know we would like to do. I don't think it's as high on the priority list as some of our other items, such as looking at our accounting. The shared financial software system is something that we're, that we're a little bit more focused on based on my conversations with Amy, but that is something that we're still looking at, and those are really the only two items.
Questions? Thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you, Burke.
Appreciate it. Anyone have any other?
Yeah, I do, just one briefly. In looking at that document that we were sent in the package, the educational specifications document.
From the project, right.
Yeah. I'm looking at page five in the section called technology engineering, and I read that with, with great interest, and I have the impression, I don't know if it's a correct impression, that what we're intending to do with this educational specification for the new Henry James Memorial School is to do more of this technology engineering. And it sounds like there's a lot of new stuff written up in that specification, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, maybe now's not the time, but I just wonder if at some point we could have a, we could at least get an update on what that, because it's part of STEM, you know, and we're putting a lot of emphasis on STEM. And it would be great to know, what are we going to do really in this technology engineering? And of course, I also wonder, are there going to be some funding requirements to get all this done beyond what we already have? I just wanted to raise that.
Good point. Good point. Talking about that continuously for sure.
Thanks.
We can get more information on that. Public audience? Anyone have anything they'd like to share? All right. Seeing none. We'll have the budget workshop Tuesday, February 6, 2019, right here.
You're welcome.
So thank you very much.
You too, Jared.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Oppose? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Just, okay.